Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're calling the meeting to order. I'm Eugene Cushman. I'm the town meeting moderator. Welcome to the annual town meeting of May 8th, 2023. If you could all please stand and we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. If you could call, read the call, please.
Notice is hereby given of the annual town meeting to be held on Monday, May 8th, 2023, at the Eastlime High School auditorium at 7:00 PM to act on the following. One, to review and discuss the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, as recommended by the Board of Finance. A, in accordance with Chapter 7.3 of the Town Charter, the moderator shall adjourn the annual budget meeting to a referendum on the voting machines. The budget resolution will be submitted to the persons qualified to vote in a town meeting by referendum by machine vote, which referendum shall take place on May 18, 2023, at the Eastlime Community Center from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Two, to adopt a five-year capital plan. Three, to conduct such other business as may properly come before the meeting, and this was dated at Eastlime, Connecticut, the 5th day of April, 2023, recorded in the town clerk's office, advertised in the day paper, and posted on the signpost.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. Under our ground rules, to be eligible to vote here, you have to be an elector of the town or 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen, and own real property in the amount of $1,000 or more on the grand list of 10, 1, 22. Under Connecticut General Statute 9-36, any person that is not qualified to vote but does vote may be subject to a fine of $300, not less than $300 nor more than $500, imprisoned not less than one year, no more than two years, disenfranchised, or all of the above. In case we are needed, I appoint the registrars as tellers and checkers. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone. There are two microphones. Come to one of the microphones, give your name and address for the record. Do not conduct dialogue amongst yourself. If you have any questions, address it through the moderator, please. Okay, the budget is being referred to referendum, so there'll be no motion on the budget. We'll simply have discussion, and after that is over, we'll do the second item on the agenda, which is the five-year plan. So I will open the meeting now for any discussion on the budget for this year. Would anyone like to be recognized? Mr. First Selectman?
Thank you, Eugene. I'm going to cover basically at the beginning here. Later on, we'll be back to do the five-year capital plan, but just cover what we basically did at the public hearing a couple of weeks ago. Here again, as it says, department heads submitted their initial requests back in the December, early January timeframe, and then First Selectman and the Finance Director met with department heads throughout the month of January. And I adjusted the budget with some input from not only the department heads and the Finance Director, but other members of the staff to manage the needs and available resources. And then in February, I proposed the budget to the Board of Selectmen. Department heads presented their budgets and were asked questions by the Board of Selectmen, and then they adjusted the budget, adopted it, and forwarded it to the Board of Finance for approval. On the town side, the two items that we felt very strongly that needed to be continued or continue hiring were two police officers. They'll start in November. The reason in November vice July is we only have to pay 16 months of salary and benefits vice 24, and the academy starts in November. So even if they were hired on July 1st, their services would not be available until after they attended the academy, anyway. A Deputy Finance Director and Purchasing Agent. The state and our auditors have made it clear that we needed this additional resource. The Municipal Finance Advisory Commission was concerned about the Finance Department staffing and the lateness over the last several years of our audit submission. This will address that, and with some financing we had left this year, the Deputy Finance Director and Purchasing Agent starts next Monday, the 15th. One firefighter. I covered that from 2021 to 2022, there was almost 1,000, an increase of 1,000 calls for both fire and EMS services. So there is a need for that. There's less and less volunteers. We really only have one true volunteer left in town. Everyone else gets paid on a part-time basis or is a professional full-time firefighter. Regional Services, and then Deputy Fire Marshal and Admin. We are adding a, or bringing up our Deputy Fire Marshal to full-time and increasing the hours of the admin staff to help process all the inspections that will be needed to be done. The revenue we're going to raise to pay for this is we have now established permit and inspection fees. We were the only town in the region that did not have a fee structure for our permit and inspection fees. Now we have them. They technically are in place right now, but we are telling everyone that they go into effect July 1st, because it's 10 days after, went in the paper after we adopted the ordinance, but we're holding off so everybody gets some notification. We estimate at least about $50,000 to $75,000 in revenue from that. Some of the challenges, new bonds, because we had the spike in debt service, and a lot of that is the renovation bonds for the school and the bonds for the public safety complex. Also, some inflationary pressures. Like anyone else, it's not like it was at 1.5% or 1% interest. We're up at 5% to 6% interest most of the year, and a lot of our services and contracts we've had to sign for fuel and so forth like that have felt that impact. Decreases in state grants and aid. We look like we're going to be getting, Representative Cheeseman is here. She told me we're going to get an extra. No, I'm only kidding, Holly. Looks like we'll get our ECS money back and some possible other things, but we aren't sure on that yet. So there's been a bit of a decrease there. And balancing needs of all departments across town while maintaining a fiscally responsible budget. Everything that was put in the budget was in need. There's been a lot of things that probably could have been done in past years, and if we, the longer we take to do it, the more expensive it's going to be. So that's one of the reasons we've made some adjustments to it. Here again, this shows you what, on the town side, we've adopted for a budget. Our proposed budget that'll go to the voters is 4.91% above what last year's was, and we've discussed what went into that. Debt service is where you see the big spike, a 26.38%, and those are because of those bonds coming online. Next year, there'll be another group coming on, so this will also be there next year, another increase like that. A little good news in capital. That's down 26.41%, and I'll cover that when I get back up for the five-year capital plan. But we were able, actually able to decrease from what we initially wanted down to $499, 522 by the use of some other funding with American Rescue Plan funds. And that will be mine until I come back. So I'll turn it over right now. Denise, come on up.
Anyhow, hi. Thank you for being here. I'm Denise Hall, Chair of the Board of Finance. And I feel like this is a little bit repetitive, because we did go through this a week and a half ago, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on the overview of what we're going to do. But once the Board of Selectmen turned the budget over to the Board of Finance, we went through the whole process again, meeting with all the department heads, reviewing their budgets. We proposed a number of reductions to the increase in the expenditures of 1.2 million, which would have reduced the mill rate to 24.98. Then at the meeting on April 24th, we had the public hearing and further finalized the budget, which will subsequently be voted on at tonight's town meeting, or not voted on tonight, but sent to the referendum. So at the April 24th Board of Finance special meeting, we voted to increase the revenue by $284,773 due to strong assurances that the education cost sharing grant would be increased from what we were originally given. We also spent some time acknowledging the use of 2 million of the undesignated fund balance. So it has been one of our goals to maintain an undesignated fund balance of 15%. Our current policy calls for above 10%, but we've been striving. And previous boards have done, and town administrators have done a great job in bringing that undesignated fund balance up over the last few years. So as of June 30th, we're estimated to have an undesignated fund balance of 15.1%. But with the overall budget being increased, starting July 1st, that undesignated fund balance will drop to an estimated 12.5%. So it's still above where our current fund balance policy says, but it's definitely lower than where we hope it would be. We are cognizant that this number is a point in time and changes as we move through the budget season. Our expenses and our revenues aren't exactly as predicted. So we are hopeful that we'll find further revenue saving, excuse me, increased revenue and further expense savings so that we can bring this back up to 15%, hopefully. So we also voted to approve the proposed fiscal year '23-'24 budget as amended to send to the town meeting on May 8th, and we voted to approve the capital plan. So overall, on the revenue side, we're looking at an increase of 6.66% in total revenue. Obviously, taxes are a big portion of that. We also have, the investment earnings from the previous year went up quite a bit. As you all recall, we had a 10-year period where interest rates were between 0 and half of a basis point. And then the Fed proceeded to raise interest rates rapidly throughout last year, and with that, we were able to invest short-term at a much higher rate than we had expected. So whereas we had been budgeting for maybe 50 basis points, we were then able to earn for 4.5%. So that created a big boost in our revenue this past year, and we think that we'll be able to achieve that again this year. Fed met the other day again and did raise interest rates, but everyone sort of expected them to pause after that for a while. So we won't see the spike, but hopefully we can maintain this. Of course, the flip side of that is if we're earning higher rates, we're also paying higher rates on our debt that we might issue. So there's the good and the bad of that. Proposed expenses, as you can see here, the total operating budget, it would be up 7.16%. We have the debt service big increase, general government up 7.89% to 9.5 million. Education budget went up 6.80%, so that obviously is moving the needle quite a bit. Our capital projects proposed for next year, this is the breakdown there, between general government, 106,000, public safety, public works, culture and recreation, and education. And I believe Kevin will also speak a little bit more about the capital. Our operating budget summary, this shows you your expenditures and your revenues. And I hope everybody who wanted got a copy of the deck so that you can see the numbers clearly at home. But it would mean the total expenditures would go up by 7.15%, and total revenues would go up by 6.66%. Now with that, and based upon our growth in the grand list, our estimated collection rate of 98.2%, the mill rate is estimated to increase by 1.03 mills or a total of 4.32%. We really were hoping that we could bring the mill rate increase to below a mill. We got as close as we thought we could, and we think this is a good budget. So we are hoping that we get everyone out to vote. If you want to know how this will affect you, once the referendum hopefully passes, the mill rate, this is an example of what it would mean to your taxes. If you have a home value of approximately $300,000, you are paying $5,006. It would go up $216. If you have a home value of $500,000, it would go up $361. So this is just your home value. If you recall, the assessed rate is 70%. So you have those two figures. We're just trying to, I think most people in their head think about what is their home worth. They don't think about what is their home assessed at. So we just tried to keep it simple here. So that would be the impact on all of us here, taxpayers in Eastlime. Thank you again to everybody who helps us put on this town meeting here and to all the people that have worked on the budget throughout the last six months. So thank you. I think Karen, did you figure out what to do now?
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Would anyone else like to be heard on the discussion of the budget? Ms. Schultz. Ms. Schultz, please come up to the microphone.
I'm Mike Schultz. I'm in Lover's Lane in Eastlime. First off, I want to thank all the boards for their efforts for this budget and all that they've done for us on a voluntary basis. But to add a point of order, I think our charter requires that the Board of Education also give a presentation this evening, per our charter. And it's Section 7.3. Where is the presentation? Come to Board of Ed.
Would you like to answer Mr. Schultz's question? Mr. Newton, why not go to the microphone, please? Name and address.
Jeff Newton, Superintendent. Yeah, nothing has changed with the Board of Ed information that's been previously shared, and everything has been turned over to town, went through the public hearing, so we weren't providing any further information this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Mr. Schultz, do you have anything else?
Yes, I do have something else. I don't think that's an acceptable answer, because the charter requires it. I think this is a violation of our charter. But be that as it may be, we have to, I guess, move on. But this should not happen again. I'm a taxpayer. There may be people here that did not, or were not privy to all that previous information for whatever reason. So they should have had the right for that presentation. I also would like to ask, she's not here, Mr. Stevens, maybe through you, Mr. Moderator, someone can answer, have we received the minimum dollar calculation that the taxpayers must provide to education over the previous fiscal year? What that minimum value is?
Would anyone like to answer Mr. Schultz's question?
The minimum, the minimum budget requirement over and above last year. I thought it was like 1%.
I do not have the exact number right now. You want to call me tomorrow? I'm happy to give it to you.
Well, Mr. Stevens did state that she had gone out for that number at the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, the Board of Finance meeting. We don't have it. Where is it? Why don't we have it?
We weren't asked for it.
Yes, you were asked for it.
I'm not exactly sure when that was.
Well, it's on tape, and it should have been, she may not have gotten the answer back already, but we do and should have that answer. Thank you. I mean, it's for the public. For me, I don't particularly care. All right, thank you.
Ms. Hall, you want to help answer that question?
I just wanted to point out that I did get an email and got the document that spells out how the minimum budgetary requirement was calculated. And so it did get provided to us, but we'll make sure that you get a copy too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Anything else, Mr. Schultz?
Yes. And through you, Ms. Moderator, for Mr. Newton, is it true that none of the 18.5 positions selected for elimination will be subjected to layoffs?
True.
Thank you. The Chair of the Board of Education is not here. I had a question for him too, but maybe Mr. Newton can answer it. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Every year, when not shown as a part of the Board of Education presentation, such as to the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance, there's a pie chart that's provided. And that pie chart is very good. We've always asked for that, to be presented and shown to the public. When the Board of Education had their presentation to the Board of Finance, there was over 100 people in this building. That pie chart was eliminated as a slide from the presentation. And that's a valuable document for people to be able to see, that, for example, that 97% of the Board of Education's budget is fixed. That means the Board of Finance has got like maybe 3% to work with. That's an important piece. It also showed what the cost was for salaries and what the cost is for healthcare and the general maintenance, also important pieces. So I guess, I guess, why wasn't it provided? Why wasn't it shown?
Mr. Newton?
Yeah, we have used that document many years in a row. Felt it was starting to get old, so we mixed it up with our slides, and we took it out this year. But you're exactly correct. It's all of our fixed costs, and it sits about 97% of the full budget. But I'm glad to know that somebody was looking at it. I'm happy to put it back in for future years.
Well, I appreciate that, because I know the Board of Finance members have asked for it each year. Now through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask Mr. Siri, why are step changes for the town employees every other year as opposed to employees of the Board of Education, which have step changes each and every year? Is there an answer to that?
Ms. First Selectman?
Mike, for several years, our town employees had no step increases at all, strictly a GWI. We were finding out we were losing employees on a very regular basis to surrounding towns, much, much smaller towns. So we came to an agreement to where, basically, we'd get them sorted back on steps, but we'd do it every other year so it would provide additional income to them but ease the burden on the town for, you know, for step increases every year. That's why that was done. Okay, on the other hand, those employees provide 100% of the services to the entire town. They don't provide for 27% of the population. They provide for 100%. It doesn't seem like there's a balance there. If the Board of Education gets step changes each year, then associate the town.
I'm sure that the employees would agree with you, but our concern was to get them back on some type of a program. But here again, taking into consideration the cost to the town. And one of the things too is where, you know, that was pretty, why it was done.
It was what?
That's why it was done.
I just have, through you, I just have a couple of statements I'd like to make. Not questions to anyone in particular. Based on the individual per capita income in Eastlime, it's about $55,000 for an individual. And I would suggest that our paraprofessionals are insufficiently compensated on their wages as they are well below, in fact, on an annual basis, they would be getting $39,000, calculate it up, 44 weeks, 40 hours a week, if we did that. And that's with their $22.16 an hour raise. But then the other kind of weird part, at the end of their contract, is that it suddenly shows that on their last step, they get a $3.64 per hour pay raise. Who does that? Now I'd like, I guess, not lastly, it is lastly. It's my understanding that the state requires teachers to obtain a master's degree within four years. Maybe I'll ask Mr. Newton if that's true, through you.
Mr. Newton?
Yes, I believe so.
Four years? Thank you. If that wasn't a requirement, maybe there would not be a teacher shortage. You know, they wouldn't have to get a master's degree. Would have a lot more, maybe more teachers with just their bachelors. And I don't think a lot of these teachers require, should have to have a master's degree. I don't know that it's given them that much more, in my opinion. Additionally, 40% of our teachers with master's degrees, it's about 120 in total count, have required a six-year certificate. That's costing the taxpayer an additional $720,000. Rather than salary, that accomplishment should be a statement, like obtaining a doctor's degree. I guess, you know, if you get teachers with a six-year certificate, I think back to the days when I was a mechanic. There was Craftsman tools. There were Snap-on tools. Craftsman tools, the Snap-on tools, they did the same job. It's just that the Snap-on tools were prettier, and they cost 50% more. That six-year certificate is not something that is really utilized. It gives them opportunity, but we shouldn't have to pay excessively for that. So to me, that's an extravagant expenditure for our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Would anyone else like to be heard on the budget? Yes, sir, in the back.
Brian Zonstecker, 65 East Padgett, Gansett, as well as 88 Oswegachi Hills, both Niatic. Brian Zonstecker, sixty-five East Patagonia, as well as eighty-eight Oswegachi Hills, both Niantic. Yeah, thank you very much for having us. This is, this is my first time going through this whole process, which is very interesting. And actually, one thing I would request you to clarify afterwards, which, and don't worry if it's not appropriate in this venue, but you explained the whole process and everything, we go to referendum. I was curious what happens if the referendum is denied by the town, what happens in that event? But then, just for comment, one, I just, let's say, I want to really thank the efforts of everyone and the committees having tried to dig in just as a layperson, citizen myself, seeing just how much goes into it and everything. And actually, especially the Board of Ed and Superintendent Newton and team and the extensive documentation, actually, all the stuff the previous gentleman mentioned. I found the transparency of the town, the ease of its availability, as well as its reiteration several times in many of these meetings to be very helpful. And so thank you for that. And then, one specific thing, again, I'm not sure if I missed the boat on this, but just occurred to me this week when I was watching the kids play at McCook's. For what it's worth, vintage watching, there's one particular set of rings in a playground, one of their things, and a ring has been missing for quite some time. So if that ring happened to fall under, that work, under any of these budgets or anything that's getting approved, I'd just like to make that shout out to whomever is the appropriate person for that. Thank you.
And to answer your question, by the way, if the budget does not pass referendum, we go through the whole process all over again, another budget is then generated.
Whoa! Well, there goes the budget increase. Good to know, thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Schultz, you want to be heard again? Two rings missing. Who's the ringmaster here?
I just wanted to mention that Mike Schultz, Lover's Lane, East Line. The Pathways Program that the Board of Education is running. That program, to me, and I, I'm connected with a lot of this stuff through the computer and everything, but I had no idea how great that program appears to be. From the mechanical to all the other programs for kids that may not be going to college. It was a great program. And I just think there ought to be a better way to get this information out to the general public. Because only twenty-seven percent of the families have children in school. How do the rest of us get that info about the programs? Because I believe it's a really a great one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, then we're going to move to item number two on the agenda. I will entertain a resolution to adopt a five-year capital plan. Do I hear a resolution? Ms. Centaur? Mr. Chillo? Would anyone like to be heard on this motion? Mr. First Electman?
I have found out over the last year and a half, I always need the town clerk's help, so.
Thank you, Karen. One of the things that we were able to do is the, basically, there are some things we buy strictly with cash. And this year, last year it was six hundred and seventy-eight thousand plus dollars. This year we got it down to four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, but still were able to do a lot. And it was a decrease of twenty-six point four one percent, or you can say a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. What we did is we looked at items that were, you know, we do sometimes buys every year, but items that are basically non-recurring, we're not, it's not the same thing, but things we could use our American Rescue Plan money for. So we identified ninety-eight thousand dollars worth of things. The Flanders Self-Contain breathing apparatus, same thing for Niantic Center. They each bought a little bit different numbers. They buy them every year, but this is one year with the, you know, the challenges of budget. We were able to use the American Rescue Plan money for that. The upfitting of Engine Three. Basically, two years ago, we purchased a, or authorized the purchase of a fire truck. We're going to get it this November, which will be two and a half years roughly. The costs have gone up. This twenty thousand dollars will cover the cost of putting in the generator, the extra cost for the generator, as well as being able to send out a couple of people up to the pre-inspection, or pre-delivery inspection, make sure everything's up, and then the delivery inspection. We want to be sure what we get is what we ordered. Fire marshal turnout gear, since we're going to be upgrading that position and having two full-timers, we want to be sure our fire marshal, who's been here for a year, who has old equipment, will have good turnout gear. Gas meters, each of the fire marshals will get a gas meter. This is what we'll tell them, if you're in a building after a fire, it's time to get out. We want to be sure they have those. Sidewalk repairs, roof repairs, and HVAC repairs. Every year we put a little money aside so that if something comes up, we have those resources to repair it. So those will go into the fund for sidewalks, roof repairs, and HVAC repairs. Those would not cover the cost of an HVAC, but it goes into that account. And this will be the first money used in that, because we have to use the American Rescue Plan money by a certain time. So this will ensure it's in accordance with that. Just if you look, I think we've already seen this. For this year, you see for fiscal year 2024, what the capital is for, and of course, the three million is not all cash coming out dollars. That's what includes bonding and everything moving forward. But one hundred and six for general government, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred for public safety. We're going to, a little more detail coming up. Public Works, one point seven million. Culture and Rec, three hundred and fifty thousand. Education, one point three six million. And the five-year total is what it would be with the five-year plan that you're going to see in just a moment. This year is the only year that you're actually committing funds for. The next five years, to be honest, is just placeholders. Those numbers move every year because we've had some things on there for ten or fifteen years. They keep getting slid just so that that place marker's there. And going back to fire trucks, we're not, I don't want anyone to think we are buying a ladder truck. We are not, okay? But if you bought a ladder truck now for a fire department, it's a seven-year wait time. So it just shows you how long you have now to get online to probably purchase something. This is just for the general government. Again, you'll see what goes out every year, moving forward for assessment, revale. Probate furniture, that's just a one-time deal because they need new furniture. And that's divided over four towns. Our share of the twelve thousand is a little bit more than, you know, there's our percentage. New ballot machines for the registrars for 2025. We're not going to give it to you. What? Yeah, that's going to be state-funded, but it has to be in there. We have to show that in there. Same thing for the assessor vehicle replacement, that will go on a lease purchase thing, but we're not looking at that to 2026. And you can see the assessment revale, that's forty-five thousand this year. That cost is going up. It's been there, so we're going to have to put a little more aside every year. That's why we do our five-year revale. You don't get hit all at once with a massive cost. We pay for it over time. Townwide computers, that's going to drop a little bit. Same thing with the townwide servers. It's going to drop off because we're making a big purchase and upgrade this year. One of the best things we've ever done is hire an IT director. It's paying off in dividends a lot, so, anyway, and some of the software. So that's just for the general government. Two police vehicles. It's in green because even though it's in there, we do not pay for that out of any tax dollars. When police work highway jobs or overtime jobs, not town overtime jobs, but extra duty, sort of like they're doing, you might know there's a construction project in town, but they're working at that and there's a surcharge on every hour. That's where that is funded. If they don't have the funds in that, they don't get purchased. So that's not something that's a taxpayer expense. You see that you have to come all the way down to a one-time expenditure for the accident reconstruction equipment. We've joined a regional reconstruction team. There was just an article about some of the work they've just recently done. And this will get our part of the equipment in there. This is a money saver to us as we move ahead because we'll have the assets from other towns, Leadyard, Waterford, and so forth. Right now, just Waterford, moving forward. Tactical team equipment. We want to make sure we have the best-trained tactical team availability in the area. Right now, Leadyard and Waterford have formed one. If we do this, we'll be able to start training so that we can join this. I was in the state police for twenty-eight years. If you call their SWAT team, there's none better, but they take a long time to get here. This is one that could respond much quicker. And as we've seen in today's world, you want speed and quick, so that's what that's there for. The public safety radio tower, that's looking at next year. Carport, that'd be at the police department, further down. And here again, that can slide, that's just a placeholder. And then, a license plate reader. What those do is, if you're a police officer sitting in a car with those license readers and someone drives by you with an expired license, you get an alert in your car. So those would be something good to have. Same thing for the fire. You see, the green is what we've taken out this year for the turnout gear and so forth like that for the fire departments and so forth. And then you see moving forward in the years to come. If anybody has seen anything up there you'd like me to cover in more detail, I'd be glad to do it, but it's pretty up there. Coming down to Niantic Fire, you see the twenty thousand for the upfitting, the self-contained breathing apparatus, the turnout gear. Deputy Fire Marshal, we've talked about that, same thing for the gas meters. Moving on to Public Works, the eight hundred and fifty thousand. We do that every year for bonding. We bond eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for road repair. That's why our roads are in fairly good condition, because if you upkeep roads, Joe, you're here someplace, aren't you? Yeah, what's the, Joe, what's the cost of having to redo a road totally? If you do, I know, but, but it's much, you just, general maintenance and that, it's just a great job. And Joe's done a really good job of upkeeping our roads and getting ahead of it. Townwide sidewalk repairs, again, we've already talked about that. Veils and equipment, vehicles and equipment, the breakdown, here again, if any questions on that. And moving out, basically every year. Buildings and infrastructure, plant dam, repair and reconstruction, that's for a study. It never costs you twenty thousand dollars to repair a dam. It costs you a lot more than that. Municipal buildings, ADA compliance, we've seen, everybody heard about that. You know, we have to, had a complaint and we're upgrading all the ADA complaints that we received at Town Hall. Includes putting in a lift. It's not an elevator, but it will take you from the first to the second floor, vice versa. But because it's the distance it travels, it's called a lift, and it's a lot less expensive. Paint the Brookside Farmhouse, that's Smith Harris' house. This is something that, and that's some LOSE funds, so that's not something we'll see coming out of tax dollars. One of the things that got so expensive is because of what's in the paint and the degradation of that building over time. Here again, when we, you addressed it several years ago, it would have been done, but we kept putting it off, so now it's getting done. The roof, the next one you see is two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for the roof at Niantic Center Headquarters. Station Two also needs a new roof, but as you can see, that slid off to next year, so we'll do one roof a year. You see town roof buildings, ELCC Community Center bonds for next year, two point two million. The roof there desperately needs to be replaced, but they're doing a feasibility study there now, so we slid it down a year. And that would be the worst cost estimate there. That's for a metal roof, so it probably wouldn't be that, but we wanted to put, again, a placeholder in there. Still, you have the public safety building, a hundred thousand. Again, we've talked about that, that's going to be coming up, but that's not going to be done. That's got bond premium dollars, so it's not an additional tax cost. Parks and Rec, two zero turning motors, mowers, not motors. They have been down, they've down three mowers, which has resulted in, you know, the grass not being able to be cut as frequently as possible. They put some out to auction a couple of years ago, did not replace them. Now they're getting replaced and they were able to actually purchase one today for four thousand dollars, so they're stepping up in it. An automated line painter. Right now, you spend about three or four hours lining a field at Bridebrook or something like this. This will do it in about forty-five minutes. And you program it, once it's done, you can go over and then mow another field while this is doing it. It's a massive time saver and it's a very small machine, too. And then you see some of the ideas moving out forward again for the plan. Parks and Maintenance, the pickleball courts are there. Everyone sees that, so that's been a, people want that. Darrow Pond enhancements, again, looking forward, we're waiting for the study to come back on that. And the others are just placeholders there. This is Board of Ed. Jeff, I don't know if you want to talk to this at all?
I'm happy to.
Yeah, I'll let you talk to this.
Most of our items are stemming at the high school and the middle school. As you know, our elementary schools were renovated some years back. High school and middle school, HVAC, I'll tie those in together. We have rooftop units that we're trying to get in a cycle for replacement. So some of those are in, as you can see, ductwork cleaning is in as well. A-wing window, this is A Wing of the high school, which is the older part of the high school building. Window replacements, we're getting into that, as well as door replacements as well. So those components are coming online. Down to the middle school, building envelope, repairs and sealant. We started that project this current year. That will continue around the backside of the building, where the baseball fields are in the back. I mentioned HVAC, I mentioned clean ductwork. Roof life extension, we are in the next phase of additional roof life extension going on, membrane going on to the middle school to preserve and keep that roof for hopefully the next twenty years, so we don't have to replace it. So that's in play. And then, that is pretty much it. We've got air quality down at District Wide, a hundred thousand. Compliance to new school air quality statute for a hundred thousand dollars, which we're now mandated to do. That's it.
Would anyone else like to be heard on the five-year plan? Mr. Schultz?
Mike Schultz, Lover's Lane, East Line. Just wondering if there's anything being done at the school this year for security with all the stuff that's going around the country? If there's anything new or positive being added?
Mr. Newton, you want to answer that?
No, Mike, no direct changes. There are discussions going on currently, but we have a pretty solid structure in place with a security staff member in each building. SRO Don Hull, who is traveling between the buildings as well. So no plan changes for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, then we'll move the question. All those in favor of adopting the five-year capital improvement plan, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed by saying nay. The motion carries. That being the last item on the agenda, we will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting to referendum by machine vote to take place May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at the East Line Community Center between the hours of eight AM and eight PM. Ms. Centaur, is her second, Mr. Chillo? Would you like to discuss that? Seeing no hands, then I ask all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed by saying nay. The meeting is adjourned to referendum.